Good evening and welcome to the May 3 work session. I should mention that before tonight's meeting, we, the board, met an executive session about a legal matter, and we also met on April 20 about a legal matter. Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCloskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here. This is our first public meeting since the death of 5th Ward Commissioner Andy Lewis. In addition to being an extraordinary public servant who made significant contributions to this board and to Haverford Township, Andy was a great friend to all the members of this board. Please join with us in standing for a moment of silence to honor Andy. Chief, can you lay this in the pledge?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first presentation is by Stephen Katsouflakis, partner with Barbara Kane Thornton and Company about 2020 audited financial statements.
Okay, thanks. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks for having me. As they mentioned, I'm here to present the preliminary of the results of the 2020 audit of the township. Let's get to the next slide. All right, Steve Katsouflakis, I'm the partner, and Bob Coffin, who's the supervisor, is also joining us. He was in the field with the staff conducting audits. Just some high-level results of the audit this year. We plan on giving an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the township. Basically, what that means is we feel that's a clean opinion. It means that we feel that they're fairly present in accordance with generally so the accounting principles. We anticipate it released in the report in June 2021, next month. The last big piece of information that we need just came in last week is the audit report for the Haverford Township Free Library. They are audited by another firms, and those numbers get rolled up into the township's financial statements. So now that we have this, we can wrap your report up. Standards that we followed are auditing standards generally of the United States of America. And under those standards, it basically requires us to plan and conduct our audit to obtain reasonable assurance that they're free of material statements. Based on, as I mentioned, where we gave you a clean opinion. We also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, yellow book, or yellow book, since the yellow book. And that's just an additional level of standards we follow, so it's a more thorough audit. We need to put more emphasis on your internal controls under those standards. Based on our review of your controls, there are no items that we consider to be a significant fish and pure weakness. Overall, we feel that the checks and balances in place are working as intended and would catch material statements, so we didn't have any concerns in that area. We also did compliance side in accordance with the uniform guidance that's put through by OMB, Office of Management and Budget. We also gave an unmodified opinion on compliance with no non-compliance issues reported or internal control issues over compliance reported. This past year, federal expenditures were $1.1 million, and you qualify for the single one because any time you spend more than $730,000 federal dollars, we have to do this separate audit. The program that we looked at was your community development block grant funds, and that made up 95% of your total federal dollars spent this year. And once again, the township does continue to meet the requirements of a low-risk audit. Fund balance results ended the year, the general fund ended with a fund balance of $25.7 million. That's up 1.9, 1.96 million from the prior year. Some of your other funds, your capital products fund had an increase of 133,000, and then your remaining funds in total had a fund balance in the year of $23,000. Again, next slide. As I mentioned before, your fund balance was $25.7 million at the end of the year. This breaks it up by bucket. The largest portion, the 14.2, is the unassigned fund balance, that's what can be used for any purpose. The next largest component is the 8.4 million, that's in blue, that should commit a fund balance. And that's the budgetary reserve that's established by the board each year, that's the 18.5% of your budget revenues that the board sets aside as committed, that's basically set aside. And then finally, restricted fund balances in the green, $2.6 million. Majority of that is your liquid fuels money for streets and highways that you haven't used yet. So really, those are your categories of fund balance. Next slide. Just some trends for the year. Just looking at the general fund by itself, this year revenue decreased by 1.1 million from the previous year. Regarding the light items, the most, the line that had the most significant decrease was your charges for service, which is a $1.25 million decrease. And breaking it down even further, in that $1.25 million, $984,000 was directly related to recreation, charges for services, and that's directly related to COVID this year, your skating rink being limited with operations. Expenditures decreased 448,000 or 1% from the previous year. And just some general fund budget highlights. This year, the final budget, you anticipated using about $2 million in fund balance. Actual results indicated that you actually increased your fund balance by 1.96 million. Your revenues were comparable to the budget, but your expenditures and your transfers out were significantly under budget, so that's why you did better, less money was transferred to the capital products fund. Store fund this year shows your revenue expenses from year to year. Revenue expenses were both down from previous year, but nothing, I think, dramatic. Revenues came in about 4.4 million, 4.47 million versus 4.7000000 years before, and expenses were 3.65 million versus 3.7000000 years before, that's your store fund. Next slide. This funded status, your pensions, your police pension as a 123020 was 82.3% funded, and that's actually better than the previous year, which showed 73.4% funded. And then with your non-uniform pension, 92% funded at the end of the year versus 84% the year before. That's just the contributions and the changes in investments set aside, set aside, outpaced the increase in the liabilities, is really why you're in better shape. And then finally, your OPAP liability actually decreased this year. Actual report number is $54.4 million versus $62.3 million the year before, and that's just your total liability, but there's no funds right now set aside to fund that. So basically, and some other communications, you said one minor and expected audit adjustment this year, not material by any means. Did have cooperation from management. This year, we only came on site as needed, so we came on site a few days as opposed to be on site two straight weeks in fast audits, due to COVID limitations. And then, you know, before this meeting, Amy did see the preliminary financial statement, so she, you know, she was aware of all these results. All right, so open up the questions.
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Our next presentation, Nancy Guerrero, our health, from the Health Advisory Board, who I had reached out to the Health Advisory Board several months ago. I know a number of us have gotten emails complaining about cats that are let loose and the lack of an ordinance in Haverford Township, so I'd asked the Health Advisory Board to look at the issue and see if they had any recommendations, and I think Nancy's going to present their findings.
Yeah, good evening, hope everybody's well. The Health Advisory Board was asked to discuss a research request from a resident concerning domestic cats running at large. The board does recommend a change in ordinance to prohibit cats from running at large for the following reasons: the potential for virus bacterial transmission to humans, health and life expectancy of the feline from disease, environmental impacts on birds, and general nuisance to neighbors. We did investigate the ordinance surrounding municipalities and found Lower Murray and Marple and Upper Darby do not permit domestic cats to run at large. Radnor Township urges the cats to keep their cats indoors when there has been a confirmed case of rabies in the area. And Springfield does not restrict the cats from running at large, but does have language that considers nuisances such as destruction or defiling of property, a violation. The only other thing we looked at was our ordinance, which could definitely use some clarity. In the definition portion, running at large or at large is considered any dog, cat, or domestic animal. Then in Article 4, the maintenance regulations, it only talks about canines running at large. But then again, down in the impoundment and penalty section, it talks about animals running at large, and, you know, any animal seen running at large, you know, can be fined. So, you know, that could certainly use a little clarity. And that's all I have.
Anyone have any questions?
How many complaints have we had? Any idea, just on a general idea? How many complaints about cats running around?
I spoke to Lieutenant Kelly. He, you know, I don't know the numbers. He does say they do get, they certainly get them throughout the year.
Were you able to investigate it? Do you know the surrounding township's enforcement, how difficult an issue is that?
I didn't inquire into that, but I can.
Do we, Mr. President?
Just honest, I think, are you okay? I thought you were muted.
I am miked. Am I?
You're good.
Do we license cats in Haverford Township?
No.
Do we license them requirements like we do for dogs? Is that a no?
No.
So if a, if a, a cat is impounded for running loose, how will we notify the cat owner other than like a wanted sign or something, Facebook post? They all are not a cat person.
Yeah, in the, in the past, that has been when they came to claim the cat.
All right, would part of, would part of this be imposing a licensing requirement for cats and cat owners?
I don't believe so.
Do we know, do any other townships, anybody aware of any other townships that do license cats?
No, the licensing from dogs is through the state, and it's done by the county, like you're supposed to license it with the county. So, you know, there's no, we don't have our own licensing of dogs, it's the state requirement.
Is it the recommendation of our Health Advisory Board that we revise our, our ordinance to wherever it just refers to dogs that we, cats? I didn't do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I read our ordinance because it's not real clear the way it's written, but yeah, they are looking at, you know, restricting cats from, domestic cats from running at large.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does the chief have any comment? The police department's here, both of them, so.
Yeah, I was going to chime in there. A lot of times, Nancy, you're correct, when they claim the cat, but a lot of times, neighbors will complain about a cat, and our animal control can, a lot of times, can track them down that way also.
But if, Chief, if neighbors complain about the cat, what, I mean, there's not an ordinance, so.
No, that's correct, that's correct, yes. So it, any time there's an ordinance, when it comes to animals, it does help the animal control enforce the ordinance, because, you know, animals at large are a problem, so.
Okay, thank you.
Chief?
Yes, Commissioner.
Is this, does the, is this something that, that your force needs for purposes of dealing with cat complaints, nuisance calls?
Well, with, it's, animal control comes under our department, yes, it would help us a great deal. It would just allow the animal control officer at least to give a warning, telling the person that this could follow up with a citation if it continues. So we normally don't cite on the first incident, even on dog calls, that they get loose, but most of the time, it's a warning unless we have a continual problem, but they can cite.
Is the sole issue being addressed here cats leaving the property of the owner?
Nancy, I'll let you answer that, because I'm not sure what conversation you had with your committee.
Yes, leaving the property, which was what, you know, at large would be considered, so.
And Chief, currently, what, do we do anything about, anybody ever make the determination that there are just simply feral cats that aren't attached to any home or any owner?
I don't have a lot of data on that, honestly. I don't think we have a huge problem with it, but, you know, it's, Joe, you'll help me on this, too, you speak animal control. We don't get a lot of feral cat calls, we get more cats, "Sir, my garden," from my neighbor, he lets it out, and she lets it out all the time, that sort of thing. So anytime, like I said, anytime we have an ordinance that would help our animal control enforce a problem, it helps, it helps their, their job.
Thanks, I don't have anything else.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you, Nancy, it's something for us to consider.
Okay, good night.
Next on the agenda, are there any commissioner committee updates?
From finance, just that next week, we will be considering an official intent resolution. We will be considering an official intent resolution with respect to reimbursement from proceeds of tax-exempt obligations for capital expenditures, number of things on the list. Just a reminder to my colleagues, this is a first necessary step for us to do any borrowing, but it is not borrowing. It does not incur any debt at this point, it does not commit us to incur any debt, but it does allow us to start to accumulate and, and recover any, reimburse ourselves for any expenses that we do do in anticipation of the project that is associated with the tax-exempt financing that we issue. So it's a necessary first step and something we'll all consider next week. I know it's on the agenda, but it comes from finance, so I thought I'd spoil the surprise and mention it now.
Anyone else?
From finance.
Chief, do you have the police crime update?
I do, Commissioner. The monthly chief's report for April, 32 criminal arrests, 1, 2, 1 arrest, 129 traffic citations, 24 non-traffic, 83 written warnings, 120 parking tickets. Robbery to the 5 West, to the bike where a victim met someone to sell a bicycle.
Chief, we're having a great deal of trouble hearing you.
Good to hear you, Chief. And how's that any matter?
No, it's very, it's very warbly. I don't know if it's the rain.
I'll pass this over to Joe, he's in the upper office, I'll let him read it then.
President, while they're doing that, if I could just indicate that another commissioner committee update, the ad hoc solar committee will be meeting this Thursday in a follow-up meeting to our first very productive meeting about our anticipated 2021 solar project.
Are you ready to continue?
Please.
All right, we had a robbery occurred at 1305 West Justin Pike. It was a robbery, the suspect came and made an arrangement to get a bike, they believed it was theirs, the bike was taken by force. We had two burglaries, 1 in 500 Block and there was run. Victim reports that known actor forced away into the home, there wasn't arrest on that. The second was 100, 1,000 Block, 100 Lane. Police responded to a residence after receiving a 911 call from the victim reporting an unknown actor inside the residence. The suspect had been nagging on, banging on the residence's front door and broken the front bathroom window, climbed into residence. The suspect was arrested and charged. We had aggravated assault, carried a 100 Block, Glendale Road. Police responded after receiving the call, the male in the rear yard on influence of narcotics. He began, they began to interview the suspect, then he resisted arrest and fought with the police and spit on the police officer. There's two murder vehicle thefts, and sad to report that there are theft from vehicles are starting back up, we had six, and all were from unlocked vehicles all throughout the town. That's all I have.
Next week, there'll be a number of items for the police department, a promotion of a sergeant, a proclamation of police week, officer of the year announcement, and numerous officer commendations. We will also be reviewing some settlement and stipulations of council as we have been doing the last several months. There'll be a second reading of a traffic ordinance. Also going to be a reading of an ordinance to dedicate Jack's Way. I believe that's in the 9th Ward. Commissioner Wexler, do you have any comments?
I think Kelly in the planning would have more to comment on this. There was an email that we all received today from a resident in 5th Ward, I believe, asking us to not consider that, but I think we, when we granted approval and the planning commission granted approval, it was with the intent that we would at some point dedicate the road so that we can plow it, pave it, and do all the normal functions that those people were paying taxes for to the township, including trash pickup and all the, all the rest of the stuff that we do as a township for that thing. I think that was our intent when we granted the, when the planning commission granted permission for the land development and the zoning and any variances that they got was the full intent years ago when it was getting granted approval was that we would at some point dedicate the road to the township.
President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Commissioner Wexler, is there anything unusual about this one as opposed to any other dedication we do in a development?
Nothing that I know of, unless Kelly wants to address anything, but it's, it's a five or six-house development in a cul-de-sac, went through the normal land development procedures, and public roads, sewers were put in, and it's pretty run-of-the-mill as far as there. Just the, I know from hearing from the residents all winter that we didn't plow the streets because we hadn't, it hasn't been dedicated to the township, so, street that doesn't get plowed right now.
Yeah, a little bit.
Go ahead, thanks, Dave.
Exactly, precisely what you said, back in early 2000, maybe around 2011, 2010, 2011. The subdivision was approved by the commission with the condition that all the standards were met, road, the township standard, you want it to be dedicated. I'm wanting to put an escrow, to assure that it was built, so we're just going through in Parker Urban Lane right now. The last time I think we accepted dedication of the road was the one off of March. It's been a little bit of a while, but there's nothing, nothing out of here.
And I assume that there are public safety reasons for us to do this. I mean, this gives the township immediate and 24/7 access to the road. This enables us to enforce curbing, this enables us to enforce parking issues, this gives the police.
The cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac could accommodate emergency vehicles. Precisely what you're talking about, there's a public water main in there with a fire hydrant, so there's fire protection issues, ambulance access issues.
Right, and if the road goes into disrepair and it's not dedicated to us, then it's up to these, you could have one or two landowners there preventing the other four from fixing the road, and it'd become purely a private affair and certainly miserable for anybody living in that area.
There's very little road in the township that's not dedicated. Haverford Reserve is the poster child for what's not dedicated, where the carriage homes are, those still remain private road with the homeowners association, but that's, that's the only substantive amount of road that's not dedicated. Puts it on the liquid fuels rolls when it gets dedicated.
And I figure, I mean, that's also, I mean, that's a homeowners association with some serious teeth, and when we think about the zillions of dollars they pay in property taxes, I'm not sure it raises the same concerns as it would for us not dedicating, you know, cul-de-sac or other smaller roads that are part of these developments. I mean, obviously, it's a good idea and I'm in favor of it, but to the extent that one letter in opposition is merely the tip of, you know, what might be several concerns from neighbors that haven't been raised about why this road, there are obviously substantial public benefits, not just to those five homeowners, but to the township to regulate the roads and have access to them and guarantee.
Put them on the liquid fuels list. And I didn't see any, I didn't see that, any constituent comment about what there may be concern.
And I will say that, you know, this development has been going on for quite a while and is, I believe, entirely occupied. These homeowners didn't buy these properties with the intention of creating an HOA and having to contribute towards the maintenance of, you know, the roads, the sewer lines, and anything that was intended to be dedicated, since this project has been approved by the Board of Commissioners back in, I think, 2007. So it's been a long road to get here, but this is always the intention.
I agree, I mean, I think that the, that these people have the same rights as everyone else to have their, their trash picked up and have their streets plowed and, just like every other, other person, just because they're, the street doesn't go through anywhere, it's a cul-de-sac, they have the same rights as else in the township.
Thank you, I totally agree. It's, it's, like Kelly said, it's been going on, and Dave affirmed, it's been going on for a long time, but our intent was always to be, once it raised, once everything was done and raised to the standards that the township would accept, it was always our intent to accept the dedication and take care of the road.
Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda will be the authorizing the filing of a formal RACME application and business plan to assist with financing of the renovation project at the Haverford Township Free Public Library. This grant could get us a million dollars for the renovation and expansion. Is there any comments? Next item, declaring the township's official intent with respect to reimbursements from proceeds of tax-exempt obligations of capital expenditures, and I believe Commissioner Holmes spoke of this earlier.
I did, it's worth noting, we include in this, in Exhibit A, the description of the projects, we always overinclude so that it provides us the maximum amount of flexibility when it comes time for us to actually do the bond issue and specify with, in greater detail, the projects we're going to do. We wouldn't want later to kick ourselves for not including something in this initial list. So Exhibit A to the reimbursement resolution includes library renovations and improvements, acquisition of fire apparatus, park and recreation improvements, solar panels on township buildings, Darby Creek Trail Extension, acquisition of ambulances, facility improvements at the public works yard, for a total of $24 million. Does not mean we're borrowing $24 million, but it's very important at the intent resolution stage for us to be over-inclusive.
Thank you. Comments? Thank you. Comments? The next item will be a revised land development plan at thirteen fifteen Lawrence Road. This is the Mr. Storage. This has gone to the zoning commission and as well as the planning commission. I believe it involves putting a fence along Lawrence Road as well as trees. Commissioner Siegel?
Yeah, it's, it's Mr. Storage, but it's also the corner property that is being redeveloped. That's my understanding.
Any questions?
Has the, has the applicant raised any objections to the, the conditions put on this resolution?
No, I don't believe they have. They, they went to the planning commission, I believe, in March. And they've also been to the Shade Tree Commission.
Mr. President, you mentioned zoning, but was there any zoning issues in this?
It was a variance, I think, in regard to the fencing.
This was just a revision to the land development plan for Mr. Storage, where this, this portion of the application requested a waiver from their landscaping requirement until they did their own land development plan. That land development plan fell through, so they're now just revising the plan to, to reflect the required landscaping that they were, that they should have done in that prior application but was waived.
Thank you. Next will be a resolution, Commissioner's support of the use of radar and LiDAR. Either Chief Iola or definitely Chief Hagan, do you have any comments?
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we are strongly in favor of it. The radar question has been on the books for thirty years that I know of and continually gets shot down for what we feel are wrong reasons. There's some, some people think that it would be used to generate money. It's like any other moving violation. The township only makes about $15 and we don't even consider that a money maker. It's what we do as our job. We have a difficult time enforcing speed laws because we have to give people ten, a ten mile hour variance. So we can't really do an effective speed checks on back streets. We only get to do it on Main Street. So I would ask for a support for this. I know the Chiefs of Police Association, the national, the local, and the Pennsylvania are all in support of keeping this moving forward.
Mr. President?
Chief?
I was gonna say was this board, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we speak about this in the past that we wanted to support this? This is something that we, we had feelings that we thought we wanted to move forward with, so I'm glad it's happening now.
John, I'm in support of this 100%. Chief, what, how many states don't allow the local municipalities to have radar?
Pennsylvania.
Just one, the state of Pennsylvania. I just wanted, wanted to point that out because it's the only state that doesn't allow local municipalities to use radar. I don't get it. This is a no-brainer.
Chief, and when, and when this is done, you guys can come down to my, to my street and, and work it out there, so.
The, more than glad to Commissioner Quinn, I think that all the commissioners would have that same request. But as I said, Joe, you want to chime in here also, but we strongly support this. It's, it's, it's very, very, it's a big deal for local police departments. It really is.
Can I, can I, I, you know, I, Chief, I've talked to you about this and sort of the struggles and some of the cut two streets in my words, with, and the problems not having anybody to use radar use. The only thing I, I'd ask if in this resolution, the, I guess, third to last paragraph where it says, whereas it is a falsehood that municipalities will use these devices to generate local revenue. I understand that's one of the main concerns for the bill that's going forth in Harrisburg now. I just think we'd be better off if we changed that rather than talking about what other municipalities will use generally. Maybe just saying, whereas it is a falsehood that, you know, Hereford Township would, would use this, these devices to generate local revenue. I just, I don't want to be, I don't want to say that we, we understand or, or know how every, you know, we've talked about this before. I don't want to, I don't want to assert that we'll know how every municipality in the Commonwealth will, will use these devices. I don't know if anybody has an opinion on that or would be willing to.
I think the language, we can, we can, we can fair play that out and do that. I think one of the important things, though, that we need to tell the public is they need to contact their state representative to push this through. It's going to take public opinion. Right now, this bill is languishing in the State House. It's back again, as the chief pointed out. It's got a lobbying group of one group of representatives that's trying to block it again. And we really need the public to call Representative Vitale, Representative Zabel, for our constituents, and also the state senator. I think it'll pass in the senate, but it's, it's really languishing in the house. And we need public support.
It's already passed in the senate, right?
It's already passed there once the last time, but it needs, it needs, it needs to get through the house and it needs our voting public to contact our state representatives. Email, write, call, do whatever, but let's blast them with public opinion to get this thing pushed through. Our resolution's a nice feel-good thing for the township, but we need our residents to push it through with our state representatives.
Forgive me.
Commissioner, you know, one of the biggest complaints, as you all well know, is the local speeding on side streets. You all get to say complaints as we do. So, you know, for, for anyone would think that we would use it as a tool other than to enforce speeding and keep people safe would be a falsehood. So it's, it's, it's a great tool for the police department and a great tool for the citizens. Any town that a police department could enforce laws without allowing somebody to drive 10 miles over the speed limit. So a 25 mile an hour street, we'd have to be stopping them at 36 miles an hour, which is pretty fast for a lot of these side streets.
Is the, is the principal opposition to this bill, the notion that too many local governments will catch, too many local PDs will catch too many speeders?
I wish I had the real answer to it, Commissioner. Really, when you think about that, forty-nine other states allow every police department to use it. We're the only one. I don't, I really don't, never could understand what the opposition is in Harrisburg. I never could understand, nor can any other chief of police understand.
Yeah.
When I, when I read up on it today, Larry, it seems to be a little bit of almost a freedom where radar is, I don't know, intruding into someone's personal privacy to, to drive on, on roads. I don't, I mean, there's this, this, this concept of generating local revenue for some, some small town that has a cut through on I-80 or something. But, you know, the, the, the opposition seems to be primarily, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't really understand it. I mean, it seems like it has support in, in both houses at this point, but we'll see.
There, there was also talk of one of the bills in the past to allow only accredited police departments to use it. So of course, you know, we support that completely, just, just as you, as State Commissioner McCloskey for maybe a town that has a cut through and it would be used, used for that purpose. So, you know, every police department is different, there are small police departments. But if you think of the amount of tickets you would have to write to generate any income to pick up a budget deficit in any town, it would be a tremendous, tremendous amount. I just, I think it's just a falsehood. I really do.
You know, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I view this as a quality of life issue in Hereford Township. I mean, it's, it's a quality of life issue in the state of Pennsylvania. We have way too many cars, way too much speeding. We all experience it. It's all residents, even in our own neighborhoods that are speeding. And you know what? We have to give them another tool, the police another tool to try to curb this. And obviously let the residents know that, you know what, we're being aggressive with it and other municipalities need to be aggressive with it. So I'm all supportive of this and I think the language can be changed if we have to change it, but this is a quality of life issue.
Steve, I, I totally agree with you. I, I think it's a tool that our police department needs. We have several high accident areas, namely Westchester Pike and Township Line, where this would be an effective tool for really high rates of speed. We're not going to go digging down in every stop sign level at the 25 mile an hour roads. It's a great tool there. Once the word's out that we have it, I think you'll see speeds down. But those high accident areas, Glendale Road in the morning going downhill, Westchester Pike at any time this, at night, and Township Line between Lansdowne Avenue and State Road is, they're death traps. We've had, we've already proved it with the number of fatal accidents we've had. So we, you know, it's a tool that we need, but again, I just implore the public to contact our state representatives and help us with this.
May I? I have two suggestions. Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
First, the third, the paragraph about the cost, if you remove everything up to the word municipality and just replace that with Haverford, that addresses the concerns that were expressed. The other issue is that we're asking only for support of the, the House bill and the Senate bill. Considering the methods by which the General Assembly operates, where they will often tap, you know, add an amendment to another bill, might, shouldn't we include in this that says House Bill 606 or whatever and other legislation containing these provisions? Because we do this every year anyway, and to say it's to let two bills when you know that House Bill XYZ could get amended tomorrow and passed that way seems, you know, missed the point.
Chief, sorry.
Go ahead, no.
President?
Go ahead.
Chief, does, if, if you're provided radar and LiDAR technology and, you know, the law has passed that allows you to do it, does this, does this also eliminate some of the subjective nature that goes into, you know, who gets stopped and for what? I mean, now that you've got an objective, you know, speed up on a, on a gun in front of you or a readout from a report, are we more likely to get, we likely to take maybe some of the unconscious bias that might come out of traffic stops right now because so much of it is discretion as opposed to real hard objective, you know, electronic and scientific tests that you have to determine the speed of drivers?
Yes, Commissioner, that, that's a fact. Right now, we, we do have some speed devices, but we have to set them up on the highway and it's manpower-intensive. So yes, it would eliminate that question that you're just stopping me because of who I am or what I am. So, so if you're stopping somebody because you have hard data, you're doing, you know, fifteen miles an hour, 11 miles over the speed limit, there's, there's no question.
Because I, I do, I do understand that that can be, that can be some of the opposition to this. It's just the concern that it's more enforcement and if enforcement isn't done fairly to begin with, the concern there's just be more unfair enforcement. But your, your understanding, and I think my understanding too, is the more precise this is, the less likely we are to get into the kind of discretionary area where that those kinds of, of concerns are, are, are real.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Radar doesn't recognize color, so thank God.
So, you know, I'm not necessarily aggressive, John, about giving you guys every single tool you want for police enforcement, but this one passes my test, so I'm okay with it.
That's a big one, Commissioner.
All right, so if maybe we just make some of those minor changes in the resolution, we'll address it next week. The next item on the agenda for next Monday will be the announcement of a public hearing, a zoning map amendment for eight thirty-three Buck Lane. This is a property that was residential about 10 years ago. It was deeded to Haverford Friends School and changed to institutional use. Haverford Friends has since said that no longer have use for, or would not have use for the building and, and we, the zoning amendment would be to change this back to residential. Any questions on that? Hey, there will be a number of contract awards. Our 2021 road program we will be voting on. It'll also be a vote, we'll again be voting on the demolition of the former Brookline School. Public Works has two purcha, two items, eighty-seven octane gasoline and their number two fuel oil purchases. Commissioner Siegel will be reading a proclamation for Mr. George Campbell. I will be reading a proclamation for Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. And there'll also be a proclamation for National Police Week and Police Officers Memorial Day. And finally, next week, we will also be voting on the appointment of an interim Fifth Ward Commissioner. Under our charter rules, we have 30 days to appoint somebody to fill the spot on an interim basis. The, there is a special election. The special election is usually, well, always the next election, next scheduled election following the appointment, but it needs to be 60 days out from the, when we appoint somebody interim. So that will make the, the next election in, would be in November. There'll be a special election and it will be to fill the unexpired two-year terms. As of this point, there has been a, at least two residents have expressed interest with letters to Mr. Berman and we will be voting next week. Are there any comments from any of the commissioners? Anybody else have any other business for tonight?
Just one other thing, Mr. President. I think this Thursday, we're having a meeting at Bailey Park with the police.
Yes.
And the residents.
Yep. At six thirty, 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 thirty out of the park.
Right, Chief?
Chief?
Yes.
Yep.
If there's no other business, if there's a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'm moved.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.